I would like to be pleased to see the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
So nice to meet you.
The meeting of the advanced town council, I cannot say who it is, but it's on behalf of the municipal management team. We hear from various departments as a progress of their activity. Hope is invited to attend this observatory council proceeding on occasion allowed through events toward protect our subject. We the town council adopt the rules of order. No one should speak unless recognized by the town council president. Once recognized, speaker shall stand, state your name, state your purpose, and address the question. Speaker shall remain on the subject and discussing, so not introduce any new comment or adjustments. No pro per nemo will be allowed by the council in session. Those are allowed to speak from the gathering, permit to speak for three minutes the first time, two minutes the second, and one minute the last time into the matter of current subject. Council by statute has a final authority in all matters to this session, so conduct the meeting in such a way as to be necessary to maintain order and then proceed. If the residents would like to discuss a new concern or request, the speak card must be completed and returned to court attorney office known later than Wednesday prior to the council meeting. Or forms received at deadline may be placed on following request. The town council can make reasonable steps to maintain order in the meeting, including removal of any person who will be present during the meeting. That's the statement. I would ask everybody not to talk because when you do, you strip this thing we have to do for you too. So don't talk to each other unless you're just happy, okay? Or talk to us if you're talking. Uh, first on the agenda is, uh, Linda?
Yes.
You're first.
Advance Food Distribution sponsored by the Advance Fire Department, AFD Squared. As AFD Squared completes its fifth year of service, our purpose, our mission, our passion has not waned. Our mission is to lend a helping hand to residents of Advance and surrounding communities who struggle daily to feed themselves and their family. AFD Squared distributes once a month on the third Tuesday, 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM at the Advance Fire Department via a drive-through. Thus far, in 2025, AFD Squared has served an average of sixty-two families per month, consisting of a hundred, consisting of a hundred and twenty-four adults and sixty-three children. AFD Squared purchased groceries for these families at an average cost of $1,544.34 a month. Each family receives groceries valued at $61. AFD Squared evaluated product distribution on a monthly basis with the extreme increase in cost in order to provide the most nutritional product for the best price and cost. Overall, cost has increased about twenty-eight percent during the 2025 distribution year. Even though our number of families has increased, the cost per family has far exceeded the equal cost of the number increased. AFD Squared also answers 24-hour needs via a message line at 317-994-6067. Many elderly adults, single-parent families, blended families, and multi-generational families reside in this low socioeconomic area of Boone County. AFD Squared relies heavily on the continuing sponsorship of the Advance Volunteer Fire Department, the continuing support of the Community Foundation of Boone County, the Greater Jamestown Fund, Love Inc., Boone County Community Garden, Gleaners, community churches, local organizations, and individual donations and contributions, as well as the many volunteers who give of their time and labor to serve others within our community. AFD Squared welcomes the Indiana State Police, the Boone County Health Department, and scouting USA PAC 550 to our list of contributors. An emergency pantry served thirty-three families, sixty-eight adults, and sixty children on Thursday, November the sixth of 2025, in an effort to assist those SNAP families and others in need due to the federal government shutdown. AFD Squared's cost for this distribution was $984.64 compared to $1,292 shelf cost for the clients. AFD Squared's efforts were well-received by the clients who've served.
You want to show the check?
I want some other things.
Are you up?
Sure, big tip.
Linda? Are we gonna show the check? We got something to say.
This is from the Community Foundation.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
There you go.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Now, the town council would like to, uh, do a proclamation for AFD Squared. Want to read the proclamation?
Um, whereas the AFD Two Food Pantry for the Town of Advance in light of changing economic times and needs of the community, whereas the AFD Two Food Pantry has established additional days of service for residents of the Town of Advance and surrounding areas, we therefore, the Town Council for the Town of Advance, Indiana, salutes the AFD Two Food Pantry and all those volunteering to assist in food distributions to selflessly aid the residents of the Town of Advance and surrounding communities.
Thank you.
With this, the proclamation, we need to sign that, and when we sign that, it'll be the meeting that's forever. But you guys are...
Thank you. I appreciate that. Along with this, fifteen thousand from the Community Foundation. We also received ten thousand dollars from the Greater Jamestown area foundation.
Awesome.
Um, we just got notification today that a private donor, um, through the Community Foundation has given us eleven hundred and twenty-nine dollars to be used for purposes of feeding people, basically. Um, I mean, it's just, it's coming from everywhere, and we are so appreciative. Our clients just, they can't get over it. They're, they're so grateful, so very grateful.
You're right. Good things happen to good people.
I know. Keep telling me that. It's all good. It's all good.
The effort you guys put forth is unbelievable.
I'm gonna hand that to you so we have to share it once we're close.
We'll keep that proclamation with me and Madison, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is, Jane, you got something else?
Yes. Um, I have a tool up for Reddick Schultz, who has passed his, um, I said test, and I think you passed all of them every time you took them. You didn't have to retake anything. Um, and now, what is your future plan?
I plan to go to college for music composition.
Okay. And who do you have here with you today?
Um, I have my aunt, my uncle, my boss, and a close friend, and my other.
And what does your boss do?
Um, she is a music teacher.
Okay. And so he's going to go on with the music and choreography. So I just think that's a wonderful thing, and here's his loan.
We'd like to have more meetings included, the primitive resources of Advance, which he did for him.
Jane, do you know how many is listening to this?
No, I think it's like, we're talking nine or ten.
Nine, ten.
But I got three are still working on yours right now.
Oh, really?
And it went to take a chance. Play on the tape.
Okay, next we have on the agenda is, uh, Transitions Plan, uh, patient sent out for the Community Crossing Grant Award.
And then Gary?
Jared Lynn, uh, cancel consideration for the ADA.
Yes, so, um, it already sent to the council, and Gary had updated this because it was due November first with Endoc, and the town is required to do Title VI and the ADA Transitions Plan, um, to be able to qualify and apply to that. So we just need to ratify the approval of the Transitions Plan that Jim and I are agreeing on.
Okay, and your motion to ratify the, uh, could, yeah, consideration of the ADA Transitions Plan, how about your motion? On first, say aye. Opposed?
And then Gary, uh, and I send this to everyone, Gary, uh, because, uh, Endoc has reduced the time, uh, to get the contract agreement, um, from four months to three months, so he went ahead and sent, we haven't gotten the order, but he rather had the paperwork just ready, so when we, when, if we get the Community Crossing's order, we can just move forward with it. And this is for, uh, the contract for the design and bidding phase, um, and the construction phase. The cost for the debt, and it hasn't changed from any of the others. The design and bid phase service is fifty-nine hundred, and the construction phase is fifty-one hundred for a total of ten thousand that he does for the Community Crossing grant.
What was the amount he suggested it's gonna cost for that thing, like, twenty-five thousand dollars or something like that for the?
Our commitment was like forty.
Forty thousand?
I think we'd already proved that, our commitment letter, yeah.
And that's for Cherry Street sidewalks, Ash Street, and their Denny, Ash Street, repaid. So that'll pretty much do most of the streets and amenities.
Yeah.
Let's do another.
Okay, probably question to approve the minutes from October thirteen.
Go with the need of preference, first if you want to tip for that, then for Jim to sign it.
Okay, I'll prove the contract. Oh, wait, I thought we just did that.
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. So contract, huh? This one?
Yeah, for engineering, yeah.
Okay, for Gary, last engineering, three months for, what is it, five?
Uh, fifty-nine hundred for, uh, design and bid phase, and fifty-one hundred for construction phase, or total engineering needs of ten thousand.
Ten thousand. Make a motion to approve Gary's contract.
Say it. On first, say aye. Aye.
And for Jim to sign.
Now, you're pulling a name.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October thirteen.
Say it. On first, say aye. Aye. Opposed? I think you passed. I'd like a motion to accept the country route last October, but for nowhere and screen, I don't want to lie there.
Okay.
On first, say aye. Aye. I think you passed.
Okay. And claims for the month of, for today were a hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Okay, can we move on to?
Yep, and, uh, so, uh, we did get the audit report back. Did you need to speak to the auditor?
On the audit report from the State Board of Accounts, uh, Sherry messed up, maybe I missed her. She was supposed to do a reconciliation on a monthly basis, and she was only doing it on an annual basis. That's what turned it down. That's the only thing that can turn it around.
No, there was, there was two things. There was that. So it's, it's not on our bank account, it's for our investment account with the NYMEL, which is linked to the, uh, wastewater treatment plant, and so issues and dividends in there, but, so now I've already filled out my corrective action plan. And then the other thing was having you guys sign, um, or watching the internal controls video, um, that was the other thing. The thing about the audit was I brought up all of these issues to my auditors, so, I mean, yeah. So I said, shouldn't I be doing these? And then I got rid of them for it, but that's okay.
Well, really, it was, it could really find a bigger one, and the, because of the paperwork she did so quickly to them, uh, it cost us a lot less than where, it was supposed to take three weeks, what, thirteen weeks?
Um, they started at the end of August, May, until September nineteenth, and they finished, um, like the very beginning of September.
It was about half the money.
Yeah.
Paid a lot of money.
Yeah, sure.
They tried, what is it, four hundred or four or five hundred dollars for utilities and two or three hundred dollars?
Um, utilities for one day is like eight hundred ninety-five dollars, and per day, um, is a hundred ninety-five dollars an hour, um, for a house. So it's, it's expensive.
So the quicker we can get it done, the better, the cheaper it is for us. It depends on the utilities and the taxes, and on the taxes, they take it out before you think about it.
Yes, that's, so, um, so I'm compliant, and I can, and close my cap corrected action plan. So, uh, for BNY Mellon, um, the cash on hand is twenty-two thousand seven hundred nine sixty-five, which also matches the fund report, and I'll have everybody sign that one. And then for, um, the bank account, um, out, reconcile balance was two million one hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred three dollars and twenty-nine cents, and the fund balance is the same, so we're gonna have to sign off on that. Also, I have, for the park board, I have appropriation reports, and I have a lease appropriation report as well. I remembered. Scrubbed out, yes. Were there any questions on the other appropriation reports? Um, next is adjustments, so we have the fire department adjustment, uh, one eighty-two seventy-three, and Prudential did a data entry error, and she transposed the numbers, it was, uh, one fifty-four nineteen, misplaced decimals, sorry. And that one was for one fifty-four nineteen, so total adjustments of negative three thirty-six ninety-two for the month of October.
I'd like a motion to do especially the adjustments for October. Say it. On first, say aye. Aye.
Tracks, we will begin uploads in January on that, and there'll be, uh, the letter writing, which I'll bring to the council meeting next month, in case to approve for the state to write letters. Um, there is a council-wide seminar, um, it's in your pockets, Amanda already said that she wanted to attend, so I will make sure that you sign up, if there's, is there anybody else interested in attending that? They got some good classes, they have some on Senate Bill, uh, FDA One, um...
When is this?
Uh, December eleventh.
I'm looking at my calendar.
Okay, it's, it's all, it's all virtual, so... So Amanda, I will get you yours signed, I will get you some of that.
Anything else you know?
Yeah, anything, anything that comes up, and I will, yes. Um, I wanted to share, I was really excited about this, and Jim shows his stuff, so I saw him show mine, but I was very excited that I got my, so Amanda, oh, she was, she was there, but she wasn't there. She was indisposed of the bubble, but I got my word, so she didn't get my picture. But I got my accreditation, uh, with Amy, and maybe it was worth it. Oh, this is pretty cool. Yeah, it was just, uh, ooh, that's great. So deserved, so pretty excited, so now I got two. There's some people that have like ten accreditations out there, and it's a lot, so... Um, website, uh, one thing I wanted to tell the council, it's a good thing we have because all of, more and more legislation, and with ADA Title VI, websites are now having to be compliant with those as well, because of IA dot, and we're with them, they automatically do audits to make sure that we're compliant, so we have no worries, I don't have to worry about that. That's just a big side relation. Um, last thing on my list is, I got an invoice, uh, because the 501(c)(3) bank account is kind of, it's out of standstill right now. We got an invoice, Scott reached out to an attorney there, they finally billed me, I just got this in October from six nineteen, uh, for thirty-two fifty. I was just asking the council, but, um, we don't pay that out of the fund because the 501(c)(3) one is stagnant.
You have a motion to pay that out of the park plan?
I made a motion to pay thirty dollars if it is, I'll talk to that for you.
Say it. On first, say aye. Aye. Did you do fifty? Is that for a minute?
Uh, I think it was for like ten.
Yeah, very quick, yeah.
It says, it says point one, so. And you might be right, we're at six minutes.
It was brother used to us.
Our word. So, um, here, uh, is, we're gonna, we talked to Sherry about that, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna call a plumber tomorrow and see if we can get somebody to come out and install a small apartment water heater, uh, at the concession stand, because when we go to do our food safety certificate, they get thousands for not having hot water there. So, um, that's important, we get that taken care of while we still have some money, um, so that'll be in tomorrow then. Um, the Jeepers Creepers Two, uh, went off without a hitch, uh, we had a very successful Halloween on the twenty-fourth, uh, we appreciated all their help, and, uh, Jim came out with a fire truck and, uh, braved us there also. Um, we appreciate the council to come out for that. Um, the Jamestown chapter of the DAR program is underway, we have, uh, two applications so far, um, the applications, uh, the applications are available at the town hall, they'll be available as well. The cost is a hundred twenty-five dollars this year, and the deadline is, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Um, the, Jim had talked to us about, uh, a date for the two-hundred-fiftieth city celebration, um, and he didn't want it to be on any major holiday weekend or up against any major events or festivals, so we set the date of May the sixteenth. And then the last thing on my list is, uh, we, it's the fire department doing breakfast with Santa?
Yes.
We would like to do the, uh, tree lighting, um, at the, at the Bible in conjunction with that breakfast.
Yeah, possibly.
First Saturday, first Saturday December, which is the sixth. And that's good for me, right?
I'd like to set a date for us to set an agenda for that, uh, May the sixteenth, like I said. I'd like to see the whole committee involved, at the church, y'all home, rolling dough pizza, um, anybody that's in the committee that can do anything, uh, because I'd like to see it to be a big day. We can do anything we want to, we just gotta know where we're at. We can have prayers, we can have fireworks, we have, we can have all kinds of stuff. What are we gonna do? What's the suggested date?
Donors and sponsors. The suggested date? May sixteen.
That's what we're gonna set the agenda?
Oh, no. You always ask me these vague things, like I can just pull it out of the air. Uh, where, you tell us when we want to do it? I think the sooner the better, I guess.
Say sometime, sometime in November if we can do that. Anybody that wants to come into it, anybody that wants to be involved, get involved on here. The food pantry, the, when everybody wants to be in there should be, and then maybe you can say, this is what I'd like to do on that date.
Okay.
Okay? When we come up with the date where we can meet right here at, uh...
Sure.
Let's look at our return on that, too.
Okay. And then the last thing for the park is, uh, we delayed the closing of the concession stand, or, uh, winterizing of the concession stand, um, until we get the water heater done, and then as soon as we've got the water heater running, then we can winterize and close it.
What about the nineteenth and November?
Wednesday? Time?
Say it. Six or seven, seven o'clock? Is that okay?
You say the what, six, seven?
Seven.
Seven, okay. Information?
Yep.
Next.
Can I be glad and start utilities?
Yep, go ahead and start utilities.
Um, for IA, uh, in the service floor for September and October, fire service requests were completed, and poles were installed in September, October, and one more emergency outage was reported in August.
Keep going. Sure. Locates, uh, we're finished with the mowing, we repaired two water lead, and a fixed meter fit, and then just upcoming jobs, pump some tanks and, uh, locates, and then whenever they're ready for us to shut the water off, park, we need to do that, we also need to, uh, tell Keystone if they're done, they need to shut it off, or they're gonna have the same trouble they did last year. What was the emergency at the church? Dover Church, okay, I know what that is. It was Dover Church. Yeah, I know what's going on. They, uh, called Carla and said that they hit our line, which, thank God they didn't, they hit AT&T line or something. It wasn't nothing, so then they had to call us for emergency location. They had to have their own location. When the new transfer were in there or something. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't nothing. They just mislocated, when I say they, not us, but the fiber line or stuff or whatever it is. Okay, you're right.
Troy has been in the country, so I don't have a physical report, but I do have a report, and I've already touched on this, that, uh, Troy had probably went to Keystone and checked out their meters, and it was discovered that part of our water loss was that when the readings were being imported into Keystone, a zero was being dropped. So instead of the meter reading right ten, or by, it shouldn't have been a hundred, it's only reading right ten.
Yeah.
So I drafted, uh, Jim asked me to drop a letter, I don't know if we had a chance to review that together or not.
You can agree. If you're gonna tell Keystone, their bill's gonna go up.
Yeah.
Yeah, to whom it may concern, our office is writing to advise that next year when all meters are operable, there will be an increase of your water charges upon review of your meters, so it's found that one meter was reading properly. However, when the reading imported into our software system, a zero was being dropped from the reading. Instead of a billing rate of a hundred, the meter read it at a rate of ten. This issue has been ongoing for several years, and the council voted, well, that's a council, we vote that, I just forgot to put it in there, that, uh, they are not going to backcharge for this discrepancy. We appreciate you being a valued customer to the Town of Advance's utilities. Should you have any questions regarding your billing next spring, please feel free to contact our office.
I'd like to have a motion that we don't backcharge Keystone for all the water, because it would be a nightmare for them to sit on them. Yes, sir. That was a too much line, correct? Yes.
Now, I'll make a motion not to dare Keystone. On first, say aye. Aye.
It'd be a nightmare for them.
Could be a non-very friendly doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's that? Yeah, the commissioner's report. I didn't make the last meeting. All right, not too much has changed. There's still, yeah, probably it's on a council board or a state committee trying to figure out how to keep from raising utility rates. It was got some of the lowest utility rates in the state of Indiana, so he's right after the park. Most of those others are stockholder owned, and they try to raise the rates to increase their stockholder rate of return, which is not very good for the customers.
Didn't get to that nuclear or someone that they just have last week?
I don't know. I'm in there.
With our talk of a nuclear plant, one of them is Indiana.
Yeah.
We'll find out the next meeting I go to, December the twelfth, we'll find out when that will be.
We got, well, it was taken years now, too. I'm. Guys, you're in itself. We're gonna be doing all the land grab and all the dealing.
They're supposed to have, there was someplace, part of Minto or that they're reactivating a nuclear plant. If they're, or when they're moving to another, or a data center, they're gonna reactivate nuclear plant. Okay, next up is fire.
Five AM, five minutes, three canceled, and eight fires.
Okay, next up is police.
We had thirteen runs last month. Eight of them were sex offender checks. So it seems like it was up a little bit, but when they do these sex offender checks, what they do is probation and sheriff's department come out. They actually show up when the offenders there and search the veterans and that kind of stuff, make sure they're compliant. We have three sex offenders in town. I guess they had to come back a couple of times. So they marked out on a run each time they did. That's why we ended up eight runs. The rest of the runs we had were, we had two disputes in the days. Grandparents coming by, look at their grandkids. Stepfather or something got, took offense to it, and one of them trespassed and went and got a protective order. So that's a house that hopefully we'll keep an eye on and see, make sure there's no violence that comes from that. We had a runaway. The runaway is the one that keeps continuing. When he ran away one time, I made a report and then got him into the system. So hopefully, juvenile probation's taking care of this. So he ran away after that, after he had court.